Well, welcome. It is October 15th. And this is the City Council meeting. Mr. English has had some medical system fix today, so he's gonna kinda hang loose today. I'm gonna ask for a roll call, please.
Here.
Here.
Wood?
Here.
Yo.
So we've got the invocation. Paul Vanoy from Candlelight Christian Fellowship is here. Thanks for coming out, Paul.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Shall we pray? Father, thank you for the opportunity to come here today before our mayor and our council members and our community, city employees. Lord, we are blessed to be in this community. We love this community, and we do seek your blessing upon this community. But we do pray that there would be a sense of healing in our community, and that we as members of this beautiful city of Coeur d'Alene would communicate well with one another, and Lord, that we would communicate well with you. It is our desire to point people to you, to point people to truth, to point people to civil discourse, and that we would have opportunity to share with one another even at times when there are differing opinions. But Lord, we want to be agreeable even in our disagreements. We thank you for the privilege of meeting like this. We thank you for the privilege of having such a wonderful community, and we ask for your blessing upon it today, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Paul. Dan, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Certainly. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Dan. Any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. Moving on. Presentations. Dan, you do a proclamation for us?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read this proclamation for you. Whereas domestic violence is a pervasive and devastating crime that affects individuals and families of all races, backgrounds, and socio-economic statuses, and its impact extends throughout our community. And whereas domestic violence can take many forms, including physical, emotional, psychological, and financial abuse, and it often goes unnoticed, leaving victims suffering in silence. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity for our community to come together to raise awareness about domestic violence, support survivors, and work toward its prevention. And whereas domestic violence organizations, advocates, law enforcement, and concerned citizens play a critical role in combating domestic violence and promoting healthy relationships. And whereas our community is committed to taking a stand against domestic violence and working towards creating a safer and more compassionate environment for all residents. Now, therefore, Mayor Woody McEvers of the city of Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, proclaims the month of October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I believe there's someone from St. Patrick's. Leslie?
Leslie Johnson from Safe Passage. Thanks for coming out.
Yes, thank you.
On camera. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yes.
Please.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor and council members, and thank you for your service to our community. Safe Passage since 1977, we have been responding to and educating to prevent violence. And I just wanted to give you an update in terms of where we are on our numbers year-to-date. So through September, we have had 1,116 people call into our crisis helpline. We've had 91 hospital response calls with advocates responding primarily to sexual assault. At our Children's Advocacy Center, we've done 153 forensic interviews, in addition to counseling. We've done advocacy with 148 non-offending parents at our Children's Advocacy Center. Safe nights at our safe shelter, as well as in hotels, because we do service men, women, and children, 2,617 safe nights we have provided. And year-to-date, in court, we provided court advocacy to 401 victims that are looking across the aisle to their abuser. So all of this work isn't possible without the community efforts of everyone that I am looking at here today, as well as law enforcement, our county prosecutors. And we just want to say thank you. Thank you for the proclamation, and together we can create a community free from violence.
Thanks, Leslie. Well, Ryan Hunter, you gonna follow that one up, huh?
I'll attempt to.
Tough one. Ryan is our chief deputy city attorney. He deals with the real stuff down in the trenches, right?
Try to do so, certainly. Well, Mayor, esteemed members of the City Council, it's my honor and pleasure to be before you this evening to present on a matter of incredible importance. The proclamation that was read, I think that was an appropriate way to begin this council meeting and recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Safe Passage is an indispensable resource to this community. I could go on and on. I won't. But I could go on and on about how valuable they are to the work that we do, to the indispensable service they provide to victims. As was mentioned, the court process is one that is not, unfortunately, very friendly to victims of domestic violence. It is one in which they are required by law, just by the necessity of the process, to face their abusers, to relive traumatic experiences in a very public setting. And that is made at least incrementally easier by the work that Safe Passage does. And so I'm proud to follow the proclamation that was provided to this representative for Safe Passage. As was mentioned, I'm the chief deputy for the city of Coeur d'Alene Prosecuting Attorney's Office. I took this role after Wes Somerton retired. I have to acknowledge the work that he did in this role, and specifically with domestic violence. Incredible work over the span of several decades to advance and combat this pervasive issue that knows no boundaries as far as sex, race, ethnicity, religion, anything. And so it is on his shoulders that I stand, though not very tall. If anyone knows Wes, it's not a lot of standing, but hopefully he's not watching. So I think in any discussion of an important topic in a public forum, I think it's critical that there's context provided. We cannot know where we are if we don't know where we've come from and where we've been. And so I think it is necessary to first take a brief review of the history of domestic violence in modern Western society. Up until the early 1800s, most legal systems implicitly accepted that wife beating was a husband's right over his wife, part of his entitlement to control over the resources and services of his wife. Under English common law dating back to the 16th century, domestic violence was considered a crime against the community instead of a crime against an individual or a victim. And so when it was charged, in the very rare instances that it was charged as a crime, it was done so as a breach of the peace rather than a crime against a victim. Prosecutions, when they rarely occurred, were informal and usually off the record. There were no legal guidance. There was no standards of proof to guide and direct what was required to secure conviction. And in the very rare instances in which a conviction was secured, the usual outcome was that the abuser would have to post what was called a peace bond, also known as a surety for good behavior. And as the name suggests, this was simply an amount of money that was paid on the condition that the individual, the man, would keep the peace and be on his best behavior for a period of time, usually a short period of time. Now, there were some exceptions in colonial America. There's Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and Rhode Island. All had codified in their early colonial criminal laws prohibitions against a husband using what they called bodily correction or stripes against his wife. But not all steps in this historical progress were forward. In 1824, the Mississippi Supreme Court cited the rule of thumb, which was essentially a rule that dictated that if a man was going to beat his wife with an implement, it could be no wider than his thumb. They cited that and established a positive right, not simply just allowing the practice of wife beating, but said that it was a positive right of a man to do so. And that was in the case of State v. Bradley. That case served as precedent for several other states, many other states, for the next several decades to pass similar laws and impeded legal efforts to push back, to prohibit this practice. And that was until 1850. That was when the first U.S. state, Tennessee, explicitly outlawed wife beating. Many states followed, including Mississippi, which finally overturned the case, the precedent set in State v. Bradley in 1871. Now, for the next hundred or so years, progress in this area was incremental at best. Beginning of the 20th century, law enforcement began to intervene to end incidents of spousal abuse, but arrests were rare and prosecutions remained even rarer. That began to change in the 1970s and accelerated during the 1980s and 1990s. And in October of 1987, the first Domestic Violence Awareness Month was observed. And since that date, 37 years ago, three themes have remained key focuses for the month of October. Mourning the lost because of domestic violence, celebrating those who have survived, and connecting those who work to end domestic violence and intimate partner violence. I'm gonna use those terms interchangeably. They essentially mean the same thing. Intimate partner violence is a little bit more of the technical term that is more expansive than domestic violence. And so what is domestic violence? I think it helps define the problem that we face. According to the Department of Justice Office on Violence Against Women, domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior in any relationship that is used by one partner to gain or maintain power and control over another intimate partner. And that power and control element is a common thread that plays through all aspects, all forms of domestic violence. It can be physical. It can be sexual. It can be emotional, economic, psychological, or technological, actions or threats, or other patterns of coercive behavior that influence another person within an intimate relationship. This includes any behaviors that intimidate, manipulate, humiliate, isolate, frighten, terrorize, coerce, threaten, blame, hurt, injure, or wound someone else. This comes, as I said in the forum, we most often think of it in terms of physical violence. Sexual violence is often referenced as well, but it goes beyond that. It encompasses stalking. It encompasses psychological aggression. It encompasses many forms of manipulation and control within a relationship. That led in the 1980s to the development of what remains a cornerstone of the domestic violence conversation, which is the power and control wheel. Now, it's certainly been the subject of some criticism in recent years, as new ways of combating domestic violence are formulated, new treatments for domestic violence are developed and studied and found to be more effective than what the original Duluth model for treating this issue. That was an effective form, but progress is progress. We've advanced. We've found better ways to do it. This still remains a key element because of that aspect of power and control and how it explains and identifies all the different ways that domestic violence can play out. The statistics show, as I mentioned, that domestic violence crosses all boundaries. Anyone can be a victim. There is no such thing as the typical victim or a standard victim. That being said, there are certainly groups that are much more victimized. As the history would suggest, women are primarily the victims of domestic violence. As I mentioned, the statistics are sobering. I'll run through a few just to kind of lay the backdrop of the problem we're dealing with. Every minute, 32 people experience intimate partner violence in the United States. That totals about 16 million people every year. Nearly one in two women in the United States will endure or have endured physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. Nearly one in five women in the United States have endured or will endure sexual violence by an intimate partner in their lifetime. Eighty-five percent of all intimate partner violence victims are women, and 75 percent of victims of related homicides are women. And two in five men in the United States have endured or will endure physical violence by an intimate partner in their lifetimes as well. There was a study done in 2017 by the Center for Disease Control's National Intimate Partner and Sexual Violence Program. They did a survey and a state report, one of the most comprehensive done. Unfortunately, there hasn't been much in terms of updated research since then. But what that survey that was done in 2016 and 2017 showed for Idaho specifically was that the lifetime prevalence of individuals experiencing any physical violence by an intimate partner is 50 percent for women, excuse me, 50.3 percent for women, and 33.3 percent for men. Lifetime prevalence of being stalked is 39.4 percent for women in Idaho. And 18.2 percent of that is by an intimate partner, and 14.6 lifetime prevalence for men. And lifetime prevalence of experiencing physical violence, sexual violence, or stalking by an intimate partner is 58.2 percent for women and 35.2 percent for men, more than half of women and more than a third of men in Idaho. And so in Idaho specifically, the law developed on track with how the law developed nationally. In 1979, the Idaho Code was amended, specifically 19-603. Subsection 6 was added. That was the first time that recognized and allowed for warrantless misdemeanor arrests in instances of assault and battery when police were responding to what they called at the time a domestic disturbance. Now, notably, this was before domestic violence was codified as a specific crime in the state of Idaho. And that would not happen until 1993. Now, this is one of the few instances, I think, where maybe one of the last, where Idaho was actually ahead of the curve when it came to legislation nationally, and they passed this codification of domestic violence, recognizing it as a separate crime in Idaho. The year before, Congress passed what would become and remains today the cornerstone piece of legislation in the fight against domestic violence, and that's the Violence Against Women Act. It was signed into law by President Clinton on September 13th, 1994, requires reauthorization every five years. It was allowed to lapse, and it's really inexcusable that it was allowed to do so. I think it's an indictment of Congress itself. But from 2010 to 2013, this critical law was allowed to lapse. In 2018 to 2022, it also was allowed to lapse. So the last time it was reauthorized was in 2022. I think it helps to understand the importance of what the Violence Against Women Act, or VAWA, plays and the role it plays in domestic violence and the fight against that. It created the National Domestic Violence Hotline, which to this day still receives up to 3,000 calls each and every day, created the first federal criminal offense against domestic violence, required every state to give full faith and credit to protection orders, and entered in another state, something that is critical to this day to enforcement of those orders across state borders, created the Violence Against Women, or the Office of Violence Against Women under the Department of Justice, again, an office that remains in practice today, and provided grant funding to public enforcement entities and private entities, including places like Safe Passage, to staff victim advocates and fund a wide array of services. And so what was the impact of the Violence Against Women Act between 1993 and 2022? National domestic violence rates dropped by 67 percent, and the rate of rapes and sexual assaults fell 56 percent nationally. That's an incredible, incredible accomplishment for a piece, a single piece of legislation. As I said, not all steps are forward. In Idaho, we've had a few steps backwards, the biggest being the decision in State v. Clark, 2019 decision of the Idaho Supreme Court, which it removed what many studies have shown to be the key tool in promoting domestic violence victim safety, which is warrantless arrests for misdemeanor domestic violence offenses that were completed outside the officer's presence. So that means virtually all domestic violence offenses occur outside the officer's presence. And this was a key piece, this subsection 6 of 19-603, that they declared was unconstitutional based on a, essentially reaching way back in the interpretation of the Idaho Constitution. They looked at Article 1, Section 17 of the Idaho Constitution, which is more or less a verbatim, it's verbatim to the Fourth Amendment. It copies it almost word for word. Nowhere in that does it prohibit warrantless arrests for completed misdemeanors. And yet they reached back and they found that that was, that this particular subsection was in violation of the Constitution. I've given presentations on this to Domestic Violence Conference in Boise earlier this year in March. And so I could say a lot about it. I won't, again, due to the time constrictions here, but I will say one thing. This decision did not need to come out the way it did. It was not a moral, legal, ethical, practical, or grammatical necessity that the Supreme Court of Idaho remove this critical law enforcement tool. And I will continue to say that until this case is overturned, because there is nothing that should have required them. They recognized what they were doing in the decision itself in removing what they recognized was a critical tool against the, they called it the extremely powerful policy considerations regarding victim safety, and they tossed those aside and based it on antiquated views of what should be, and essentially overturned the will of the legislature that had been in place since 1979. But, and Randy's probably sick of me using this quote, but it's one of my favorites, and I think it's most apt in this context, which is never mistake law for justice. Law is a tool. Justice isn't ideal. There have been some steps forward in Idaho. In recent, this past legislative session, there was actually quite a few movements forward in the battle against domestic violence. From prosecutorial standpoint, there's House Bill 387, doubled the penalties for first offense misdemeanor domestic violence. That doesn't require us to impose those on first offense, on first offenses for perpetrators of domestic violence, but it gives us more room. It gives us more tools and more leverage to work with in trying to encourage what is the primary goal of prosecution of domestic violence for our office, and I think for all the prosecuting agencies in the county, which is rehabilitation. This is a treatable thing, but first we have to get the offender into treatment. And so this helps with that effort by putting more on the table, by creating more at risk if they proceed to trial or they try to find a way to avoid responsibility. Some additional laws that were updated, enhanced penalties imposed for second and third offense attempted strangulation, the updated telephone harassment, which is very directly linked to instances of domestic violence. It's just been updated to account for modern technology. On the national stage, things have stayed essentially even. The Supreme Court, with the many cases that were, it issued this last term, issued one, thankfully, that left things as they were, which is that the, a specific term of the Violence Against Women Act that prohibited those subject to protection orders or who had been convicted of domestic violence offenses from possessing a firearm. The Supreme Court upheld that provision, said it does not violate the Second Amendment, and so things essentially have stayed where they were on the national stage. For our office, the statistics have essentially stayed on track with prior years. I put an asterisk on the partial total that is indicated there from January 1st to October 1st. I have to qualify these numbers. They are underrepresented of the actual case count in our office, and this is just solely due to the transition from our case management software at the beginning, or at the end of last year. In December, we switched over to a different case management system. It took some time to essentially figure out our process for how we would tag and track specific cases. And I think in that process, there was obviously the interruption that occurred, to use a slight term, interruption in February, that also caused some issues with being able to properly tag and track these cases in the first two to three months of the year. And so this is low by about a third. And when we adjust these numbers, weight them, taking account of that, these are right on track with prior years, which is neither good nor bad. It's essentially, these numbers have stayed the same. The one, though, that I think is of concern for our office that has gone up, and that is even just with the raw numbers shown here, is the domestic battery in the presence of a child. There's more instances, we're seeing more common, that violence is committed when children are home, when children are in the room, when children have to intervene. And that is a problem. It is one that, again, I think is societal. It's not one that necessarily lends itself to enforcement other than, or to solving through enforcement, other than we have penalties that are now higher to address that, and we prosecute it vigorously. If there's a child involved, we take, we approach all of these cases with incredible seriousness, but when a child is involved, it just adds that much more to it. Some final points. At a county level, we participate in the Domestic Violence Court for Cootney County. This was created in 2013. It was from a grant from the Office of Violence Against Women, supports a wide array of services and has a wide array of stakeholders and community partners, including our office as well as Safe Passage. The county prosecutors, postal prosecutors are all part of this court, and it also has involvement from the public defender's office and private attorneys as well in helping to staff the court team for this court. It operates under a continuation grant, does some amazing work due to the dedication of key stakeholders. What it does, it's a centralized process for handling criminal misdemeanor domestic violence cases. So it offers increased offender accountability through judicial review hearings set on a regular schedule. Basically, they have to appear before a judge after sentencing on a regular basis, and the judge asks them how they're doing. Probation officer is assigned. There's a dedicated judge, a dedicated probation officer, and there's a dedicated court coordinator, Mark Hyde. The current judge is Judge Destry Randall's, and the prior probation officer was Steve Johnson, and it's now switched over to Tamika Norris, who's going to be taking over his role. But these dedicated individuals are able to allow a greater continuity of interaction and treatment and oversight of these offenders, and we see incredible results from those who take advantage of this Domestic Violence Court and do the treatment. We've had reports of those individuals having not just better results at home, but better results with their employers, better results with family members. Their overall interaction with the community is fundamentally better. This court is noted, or was applied for and was awarded a national mentor court status in 2020, and that means that it met the highest standards for national domestic violence courts, so much so that was selected to mentor other courts in how to pursue these best practices and construct a court that was effective. For the 2024 and 25 fiscal year, we've been assigned two courts to mentor, one in Kingman, Arizona, and another in Liberty, Missouri. Finally, to toot our own horn just a little bit, some accomplishments of our office related to domestic violence over the last year. As I mentioned, I presented at a conference on the ongoing impact of State v. Clark in Boise in March. In May, one of our attorneys, Vicki Noel Carey, attended a week-long national training on domestic violence trial strategies and brought back some valuable information for use by our office. We participated in training in September on the role of technology in facilitating domestic violence and intimate partner violence, which was both informative and also incredibly terrifying. I highly recommend everyone delete their Facebooks and all their online presence. It's some scary stuff out there. And then we are actively working with the Coeur d'Alene Police Department to streamline the process for seeking arrest warrants in domestic violence cases, which is one of the key tools that we have now in the wake of Clark to address domestic violence and get that critical cooling down time and the opportunity to get a no-contact order in place in cases of domestic violence. So the work continues. Encourage this council to continue its support for community victim support agencies like Safe Passage. They do incredible work, as mentioned, since 1977, and we, they're indispensable and just invaluable resource to this community. We're so very lucky to have them. Support for our police victim advocates, Avery Hughes. She does a yeoman's job in, is the only advocate for the police department. She regularly provides insight and information into emerging cases or newly filed cases. to our office. She gives us critical information that we would not otherwise have regarding particular circumstances the victims might be facing or considerations that we, that go into whether we request a no contact order and how we put that before the court and makes it more effective in being able to get those. She really does an incredible amount of work for the position that she holds. And of course, I have to recognize our victim coordinator, our victim advocate, and she's a volunteer at that, Susan Kerner. She began volunteering with our office in twenty eighteen after retiring from working as a victim advocate for the Cootney County Prosecutor's Office for thirteen years. She has twenty-plus years of advocacy experience and knowledge, and she's very familiar with the services that other agencies provide to victims. She attends quarterly meetings for the advocacy group with Safe Passage, which aids in understanding services available from other agencies and addresses issues agencies may be experiencing. She has worked with students at Lewis and Clark State College. She's been a rape victim advocate. She's received several awards. She truly is a Renaissance woman, and we, she is invaluable to our office in the work that she does in connecting the prosecution, myself and the other attorneys, to the victims that we represent and advocate on behalf of. And so, the adequate resources, that all boils down to money. Obviously, money is always going to be the thing. This was mentioned, there's, you know, fundraising efforts for Safe Passage, but our office, you know, obviously, when Susan decides to retire, that's going to become an issue for us. That's going to create a huge gap. And ultimate goal is to hire a dedicated victim advocate and witness coordinator to fill her role ideally before she retires, so that she might be able to pass on some of that information to them. In additionally, that'll help address continuing to increase caseloads for our office. But that's really a matter for budget time. I'll leave that for then. Thank you for your attention and time in addressing this very critical matter. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. We have probably a couple of questions for you. You don't just walk away here.
Absolutely. I'm new at this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ryan, this just wasn't any other presentation. This is probably the most critical work that you do, that the city attorney's office does. This kind of crime has a generational impact.
Absolutely.
And so, I'm really, I mean, it was a long presentation, but yet, I was on the hook the whole time watching. It was really well done. Some of the things that you said that really hit home, you know I have a career in law enforcement.
Absolutely.
I started in the nineties, nineteen ninety. There weren't any laws that dealt with domestic violence. There, the seventy, nineteen seventy-three law that you mentioned, I don't think I was ever even informed of that, but there was policy that was unwritten. So, when you arrived on a domestic violence scene and there's clearly a bloodied victim with throat marks, you, the policy was to ask her in front of her husband if she'd like to make a citizen's arrest. You can just imagine the travesty of that and that it never happened. So, I'm just, I know what the police department, the policies we have today, the, I know the amount of effort that goes into not only investigating these cases, but prosecuting them. So, you really caught my attention with you're working to streamline process for seeking arrests. So, that tells me that you're getting called in the middle of the night, and you're going out and you're writing arrest warrants.
We are. And it's, it's been kind of a new process that started. It's been slow since Clark, but as we've worked closer with the Coeur d'Alene Police Department, we are getting those calls. We are making those efforts to, to get, wake the judges up, and they've expressed willingness to us to, they want to be woken up. I don't know if want is necessarily the, right.
They don't.
But they're absolutely willing to take those calls. And so, we're working on a way to have specific, those core instances or core crimes of, you know, domestic battery, domestic battery in the presence of a child, stalking, and a few others that are really at the heart of the ones we see most frequently, to have those in kind of packet form that are ready, that the police will have, they're able to fill out beforehand. They can then, it'll shorten up that timeline that I think sometimes works as detriment or a, dissuades some officers or from, from making that call in the middle of the night. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to get that rolled out here in the next month or two.
I really appreciate the work between you and the police department.
Absolutely.
And this is, Coeur d'Alene needs to be known for, the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I just had the privilege of being a board member for Safe Passage a year back, and I know how hard Wes Somerton worked in that arena. So, I appreciate that you've stepped into those shoes and are continuing to carry that torch. My quick question was, what's the status of the overturning of the, you're obviously passionate about, the overturning of the prohibition of the warrantless arrests? And are there groups working on that? What, where is that at? Can you give us real quick on that?
That's a great question. Unfortunately, in the years since Clark, there has been only shoring up of the decision. There's just been additional decisions that kind of drew those lines more starkly as to the boundaries of Clark, which usually indicates that it's, if it's going to get overturned, it's probably a ways out. The reality is that that's maybe a pipe dream. Yeah, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't, you know, indicate it as a hope more than it is a realistic effort at this point. It all will determine, be determined by the makeup of the court, unfortunately. And I don't think that is likely to change much with the addition of several new members over the last few years. I don't think it'll change much anytime soon.
Thanks. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? I have one question.
Yes, Mayor.
In regards, I'm a little overwhelmed. I always thought you guys chased the people going through red lights and stop signs and, you know, and here's this real life stuff. How much of the work you guys do down there are percentage-wise? Is this a big portion of the work? It's gotta be the toughest part, but...
I would say qualitatively, it is the biggest. And, you know, the two big categories of offenses that we deal with in our office are obviously drunk driving and domestic violence. And between the two, domestic violence is exponentially harder to prosecute. There are a myriad of different impediments to that. First and foremost, as Councilwoman Wood indicated, victim hesitance. There's a whole host, there's a whole areas of study into why that is and what plays into a victim not wanting to participate or being, you know, hostile to the prosecution itself in these cases. And so, you know, our effort is focused a lot of times on just simply getting the witness we need, the key witness we need to be willing to testify. We're working on, you know, deploying trauma-informed means of talking with these victims, of engaging with them. We're trying to make sure that we have more frequent contact with them, and that helps in making it more viable to proceed with these cases. But they are definitely by and far, I just, I don't know if number-wise, they're the largest portion, but effort-wise, they absolutely, they command a vast majority of our attention and resources.
Well, thank you for all you're doing out there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks for the report. Well, who wants to follow that? Just kidding. Our, we're next up is public comments, and I have three people signed up. Joseph Deacon is number one. Come on up. Welcome, Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council members. I was asked to say a few words about a program called Honor Flight, which has been in existence for about twenty years, and we participate along with the Spokane Hub. And we send a lot of North Idaho veterans to Washington on that program. Unfortunately, it ran out of money for the first time in twenty years. They had to cancel the flight this month. So, all the eighty, seventy-five, eighty, ninety-year-old veterans in this area are unable to go to Washington for the first time. So, we put together a Honor Flight fundraiser locally here for the first time, and we just wanted to make both the city and city council aware, we're in the final throes of this fundraiser. It ends at the Eagles Club with a big band event on November eighth, and any help in communicating this to the public is very helpful. It costs a quarter of a million dollars for one flight, and the flight that was canceled will come next year in, in April. Thank you for the opportunity, and we hope that we can support it locally. We send a lot of folks from our area because we're the, one of the largest numbers of veterans percentage in this county of any county in the United States. Twenty-two thousand veterans live in Cootney County. So, thank you all and appreciate my first time before you, and it's wonderful to see you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Joseph.
Joseph, where can we get more information?
We have flyers that we're going to leave with your city clerk here, and it's been in the press quite a bit, but we're going to see more, more marketing in the next few weeks.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. Nancy Phillips. Welcome, Nance.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here on behalf of the Lake City Center located in nineteen sixteen North Lakewood Drive. Lake City Center has been a nonprofit since nineteen seventy-three. Our mission there is to provide food for, to help with insecurities and social isolation in the community's most vulnerable seniors. We provide nutritious meals to these seniors at their homes as well as congregant meals at the center. One of the most impactful programs that I want to talk to you about is the Home Delivered Meals Program. We provide nutritious meals at no cost to these seniors that are low income, low, they also have mobility issues, and some are disabled. Currently, the budget for this program has been cut significantly, and due to these cuts, the seniors are now placed on what they call wait lists. The wait list is calculated and ran by the area agency on aging. These seniors on this wait list are eligible for the Home Delivered Meals Program. However, due to the funding constraints, the seniors are prioritized by a point system. They are competing with seniors in five other counties in order to get on to the Home Delivered Meals Program. There is no set time on how long they are on this program. These cuts are significant and it impacts all these seniors. The center is doing their best to help the seniors on the scholarship program. In order to do this, we solely depend on grants, donation, and fundraisers. Right now, we have fifteen waitlist seniors that we are holding on scholarship programs. This upcoming week, we're holding a fundraiser to help these seniors. It's on the twenty-fifth of October. The fundraiser is critical in order to provide the meals that's necessary for the upcoming holiday season. Every donation helps to combat food insecurity. These seniors and the center relies on donations. Every donation makes a difference. That is all I have. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer.
Nancy, what is the gap you're trying to reach, you're trying to bridge with your fundraiser?
So, right now, the area agency has twenty-seven percent funding for the senior meals program. However, the gap that we have is roughly around seven dollars per meal. Each ticket that we sell will help feed one senior. So, hopefully, everybody can come and help feed a senior for a week.
How can people get more information?
On our website, www.lakecitycenter.org, and also our Facebook page.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Welcome, Lynn.
Good evening, councilmen, members, and the mayor. I, my name is Linda Wood, and I am also a member of the VFW Auxiliary here in Coeur d'Alene. And I was approached by a veteran who rides the city bus, and he uses the C-Box, the Veterans Clinic. And when he's dropped off, no problem. He goes in, and then when he's seen as a patient, he comes back to wait for the bus. There are no benches or anything there. I'm aware that there are a few benches around town that aren't being used because the bus routes changed. So, is there any way that one of those benches could be put there for the veterans, older guys that come out to wait for the bus and possibly get it covered?
Sure, we can do something like that. Troy, can you maybe look into that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, we, fortunately, City Links on our agenda, and we'll be able to talk about that.
Oh, very good.
And we actually visited that site, so thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for coming forward.
Thank you for the, anyone else, public comment? Hearing none. We'll move on to announcements. Council, any good stories? Kiki.
I've got three things, maybe four. I wanted to welcome our new library director, Elizabeth Westenberg is here. And she's, they've been giving me good tips always about the positive things that are happening in our Coeur d'Alene library. And they just received a children's early learning grant. Not sure if I have that correct, but fun fact, that the children's library is up over fifty percent in checkouts than what it was eight years ago, and seventeen percent from last year. So, welcome, Elizabeth. A lot of good work to, ahead of you, and we appreciate you being on board. The second thing is I attended today the Association of Idaho Cities Fall Training Conference along with Renata. We were there all day. And that ended with a development agreement workshop that I've been working on for about the last year, and that was a product of the Housing Solutions Partnership. And it was sponsored by North Idaho Building Contractors Association and the Professional Women in Buildings. And I just wanted to let council and you know that the significance of this is that in attendance were members of our builder and development community, our city planners, engineers, staff members from all over the county who are continuing to come together to work on things that can help us with the local worker housing issues that we face. So, there's still a lot more work happening, and I was very pleased that'll be recorded and put on the HSP, the Housing Solutions Partnership website for further training. Segueing into that, I wanted to share this beautiful thing, which I was honored to receive from the APA, which is American Planning Association Idaho Chapter. On behalf of the Housing Solutions Partnership, we were awarded this as a housing key planning, I'm reading backwards, planning tool or implementation award. But I want to share this with the City of Coeur d'Alene planning staff and the other administrators who have worked for nearly four years now on putting together collaborative efforts, building a toolkit, and helping us with anything possible to deal with our housing situation. I'm going to be making some visits to the other jurisdictions, the county and the other cities, who I'm going to present a certificate and this with them, to thank them for their help. And we hope this gets support and we continue this work for years to come. And that's all I have.
Congratulations. Well done.
Way to go. You guys, anything? Kristi, Dan? Well, I have a couple. First off, I want to, we have the new guy. We got our new TV guy, and it's Ryan. He's back there working, and Jeff's staying with him, helping him train. Jeff has moved on. He's going to the coast to be with the grandkids. Start hearing that a lot around here. And Ryan just came in, and so, he is back there learning how to make all this so you can watch it over again or yell at us or do all the things that you can do. Thanks, Ryan, for being here and hanging there. And Jeff, thanks for taking him under your wing. First off, I would like to make a nomination for the appointment of council seat number four. That's that empty spot down there, of Kenny Gabriel, to pursuant to Idaho Code five oh seven oh four.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kenny Gabriel to the position of council member.
Second.
Being moved and seconded. Discussion? Questions? Kristi.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted, I want to thank you for pulling the council together, having a process where we got to visit with all applicants, ask them some questions. We all know Kenny. We all know his quality. But it still was a good process. It was good for us. I think it was good for the citizens, and hopefully, it was good for Kenny. Hopefully, he enjoyed it. So, I'm pleased and I'm happy with your nomination.
All right, thank you. Dan?
I must say, I'm disappointed. Normally, when we do these things, we have cake. And I've asked for cake every single time, and there's still no cake.
No cake for you.
Sorry, Kenny.
I'm shaking.
We do have cookies, I think, coming later.
All right. All right.
All right. Any other discussion, comments? Hearing none. Could I have a roll call, please?
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Wood?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Wow, Kenny, are you okay? So, you got to come up and take the oath of office and do all that stuff. Congratulations, bud.
Let me just clap ahead of time.
That's the city administrator's job.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kenny Gabriel.
I, Kenny Gabriel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Idaho.
And the ordinances of the city of Coeur d'Alene.
And the ordinances of the city of Coeur d'Alene.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You might be doing on this hard to think.
Thank you for doing a little bit of that at the time.
Here, of course. You can have this one.
Thank you.
You want to take a moment and have a picture with your family?
Is that okay? If I, one minute, I promise.
Then you assume the position.
Those cars are so big.
Cute there.
Mom's going to get there.
That's a great picture.
Awesome. Welcome.
Now we go to work, huh? I'm usually warmed up, seated up, but I can, yeah.
Is that where we put the whoopee cushion?
Sorry, there's no cake.
No cake. Well, that's the worst that happens. We're in pretty good shape. All right, a little business here. I need to make some appointments.
Tell you what, Mr. Mayor, let me make a motion for you.
That would be awesome.
To appoint Kiki Miller to the Ignite CDA Board and the following student representatives: Ellen Smith, representative, and Nora Crabtree, alternate to the Arts Commission; Alex Pulsifer to the CDA TV Committee; Sam Fraley, representative, and Madeline Mae Durkin, alternate to the Child Care Commission; Ayla Friends to the Library Board; Jaren Bailey to the Park and Recs Commission; Alastair McIntyre, rep to the Pet Bike Advisory Committee; and Gabriel Hines, rep to the Urban Forestry Committee.
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Need a roll call, please?
Aye. Wood?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
That feel good?
Was that hard?
I'm missing that boat, you know?
I know you are.
All right, moving on.
I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, which includes Resolution twenty-four zero eight one.
Second.
Being moved and seconded. Discussion? Thoughts?
Yes, that was it. Mr. Gabriel, you got to be in there faster with those seconds.
No, I do. I'll get there.
Get there, all right.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please?
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
That feel good?
Was that hard?
Did. I'm all right.
I'm missing that boat, you know?
I know you are.
All right, moving on.
I will make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, which includes Resolution twenty-four zero eight one.
Second.
Being moved and seconded. Discussion? Thoughts?
Yes, that was it. Mr. Gabriel, you got to be in there faster with those seconds.
No, I do. I'll get there.
Get there, all right.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please?
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gookin?
Yep.
Under other business, Mike Becker, all the way from the wastewater treatment plant is here to tell us some stories.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Hello, Councilmember Gabriel.
Hello.
Good to see you again. I just want to expand on Council, and Gookin's comment on cake, you know? The wastewater department produces two truckloads of cake every day down there. So, come on down. We call them bio solids, but you know, it is cake. So...
Thank you, but no.
No, that's a big no. Well, before you, the wastewater department is asking council to approve Amendment Number Four to an existing HDR professional services agreement for our solids building improvements. Amendment Number Four, because we have a really full agenda, I'm going to rush through this, if you don't mind. Amendment Number Four is for the additional work that HDR is doing for us. One, extending the contract a year. Two, we have numerous change proposals and work change directives. And we also are going to experience a winter shutdown as well as a remobilization of the contractor. All of this is additional engineering that's going to be required to get this project to the finish line. My staff report in blue shows itemization breakdown of these additional services as part of Amendment Number Four. Amendment Number Four is a continuation of this existing project. Often, when we have these multi-year projects, we started this in 2020. We're still going through construction on this. These amendments are quite often because it's very difficult to forecast just how the market demands will be as well as, you know, contractors' progression on a project. So, Amendment Number Four is in accordance with Idaho Code sixty-seven twenty-three dash, I'm sorry, twenty-three twenty, which allows the city to renegotiate contracts for a phased or ongoing project. So, it is based on this information that staff recommends that council does approve Amendment Number Four for an existing professional services agreement in the amount of three hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. I tried to rush through this and not bog you down with too much information, but I'm here to stand for any questions, should you have any.
Questions? I have a couple. How are we doing budget-wise? Are we still within the numbers that we, long-term projection for the project?
Yes. As you, as you're aware, we've experienced some significant change orders and part of that fell into a capital reserve fund that we have. But the project itself has remained within the same budget allotment. This is additional services that has been incurred as part of those change orders that we have experienced, as well as the lengthening of this contract.
I know you're pretty hardcore on getting changes and keeping it tight. Let me ask you, when you said winter closed down, can you explain that to me a little better?
So, we've reached a point in the project where we're waiting on equipment to arrive. This equipment was ordered over a year ago. And believe it or not, it's taking this long and we won't get it till February. The contractor will be done with his, pretty much, the entire project except for what's remaining to be received by the city, this equipment that we're talking about. And it's due in February. So, we're going to give them, you know, obviously another thirty days because we can't rely on, you know, these dates for certain. And that gives the contractor another few months to actually install the equipment. So, this project, which should have been wrapped up last year, is actually being extended into June of, I'm sorry, yeah, June of 2025.
So, that's pretty common. I mean, if, if you can't get the parts, the equipment stays? Is that what we're paying for, to keep it there instead of taking it away and bringing it back? Sorry, I'm down in the weeds.
Okay. I'm not quite sure I understand that question.
You said something about winter closed down. So, I thought we were paying to have...
Okay, so the contractor will demobilize. And so, he'll shut down. We'll have potential use of the building, not using the equipment because obviously, we're waiting on a key component. And then they'll remobilize in the spring when suitable weather and equipment arrive.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none. Look for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number twenty-four dash zero eight two, approving Amendment Number Four to the city's existing professional services agreement with HDR Engineering Incorporated for an additional, for additional professional services associated with a solids building improvements project in an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Second.
Being moved and seconded. Questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please?
Thank you.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gookin?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Monty, welcome. It's been a while. How's things out on the trails?
Good. Really good.
Getting ready for winter, right?
Um...
All right. We are considering municipal amendments to require construction of sidewalks within priority pedestrian corridors that include school routes and the Croc Center.
Oh, I think I have my...
Are we on the same page, sir?
Are we on priority corridors first? I got two items. All right, I'll do priority corridors first. All right. So, tonight, I'm here to talk to you about priority corridors. So, we have an exemption to an ordinance that allows, due to hardship or distance from an existing sidewalk, allows an exemption. If you don't have a sidewalk within four hundred and fifty feet, you don't have to build one. And so, that has, over the years, prevented the city from getting a lot of sidewalks in a lot of areas. But we understand that's difficult to get in some neighborhoods and it can be cost prohibitive to homeowners and, but we have a solution that will help, the Pet Bike Committee, I should say, has a solution to help get some of these areas that need sidewalks, sidewalks without applying this to the whole city. And that is what we're calling priority pedestrian corridors. So, the idea is, in these particular areas that we've identified, that we remove that exemption so that if you come in and you have a project over thirty thousand dollars that, and you have to fix sidewalks, you have to put them in. So, you can't, you can't use that exemption. So, this, I brought this before the Pet Bike Committee, the Parks and Rec Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and now we're here to you. And so, the city of Coeur d'Alene is bike-friendly community. We're working on gold. But like walk-friendly, we are, I don't even think we got honorable mention. We were denied. And so, we've been working on improving our, our pedestrian corridors for, for not just ADA but all people who walk, people in strollers, ADA ramps, and sidewalks connecting everywhere. We do have a, a program that we're going around building sidewalks here and there where we can over the years. It'll take a lot of years to catch up, though. So, this is going to help us, we believe. So, this map right here shows where we have existing sidewalks throughout the city, all in blue. And this map shows where they're missing. And that's about thirty percent of the city is missing sidewalks. And so, as, as you can see, over here to the east side of town, the oldest parts of town, is where they're, they're missing the most. We even have layers of how many of those streets are also missing ADA ramps. That's a different story. So, when you showed, put the two together, you can see the difference as far as what we have and what we don't have. And so, the priority corridors that we've identified, they all had to do with access to school. So, we have the first six are Coeur d'Alene High. We have three to Fernand Elementary, one to Wynton, and two to the Croc Center, which isn't a school, but there's schools all around there. And it is a center for children. So, on this map, you can see maybe some bright green circles around the corridors that we're, that we're trying to, to get sidewalks built in. And so, these areas would be exempt from that four hundred and fifty-foot rule and it would be a high priority for grant money. We'd go after grants. We'd apply for them to get them installed in these areas and work with the street department and see the CDBG funding to try to get sidewalk connectivity there. And so, this isn't requiring homeowners to go out there and build sidewalks in these areas. This would be when a house is rebuilt or a developer comes in and tears out an old house and builds an apartment complex and they have to put in a sidewalk. Because a lot of times right now, they don't have to. If you have a big, multi-million dollar development, if they're four hundred and fifty feet away, they don't have to build a sidewalk. So, eventually, we start requiring this and over the years, we'll get connectivity. And we will be applying for grants for some of these areas. So, the decision point would be, should city council adopt the changes to the sidewalk exemption that will allow priority corridors we identified and direct staff to prepare an ordinance.
So, questions? Amy?
Just to clarify, then the ordinance would come back to council?
Uh, I believe so, yeah. After it's, after it's drafted.
And one other just point is, thank you for your work on this. It's absolutely imperative that we do everything we can to improve the safety, especially around the schools for families walking their children to and from. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Council, questions? Dan?
Yes, I have a different take. So, I was on council when we passed the ordinance that said that if you remodel your home, you don't have to put in a sidewalk. Because I think it's ridiculous that if there's no sidewalk to the left of you and no sidewalk to the right, why should you put in a sidewalk that goes to nowhere? And there's lots of those around the city. So, we fixed that. And we said, if you live in a neighborhood or somewhere where there's no sidewalk, you don't have to put in a sidewalk. It seems like we're chipping away at it now. And I know, I mean, it's for a good purpose and all things are always for a good purpose. But it, it would require that if someone is going to remodel their home, or say, the guy next to you sells his house, they knock down the house, they build a new house, there's a sidewalk there. Which means if that guy now has to remodel his home, he needs to put in a sidewalk too. So, the burden's on him. The developer next door did it, the burden's on him. Now, you said something about grants, maybe that would pay for it, whatever, over time. And of course, there's no ordinance written. But it still, it seems to me, you know, this is Idaho. This isn't a big city. There's lots of places in the city where there's no sidewalks. And people buy homes there because they like that. They like that lifestyle. And I don't think we should be putting in sidewalks unless the city just wants to pay for it straight out and say, hey, we're putting in a sidewalk. But, you know, it's the character of the neighborhood. And I think we fought very hard to get that ordinance in there to say, you know what, you don't have to put in a sidewalk. And I know there's examples in the areas that you showed where there is a home that has a sidewalk that goes from nowhere to nowhere. And I just think that's too much of an undue burden on the homeowner. I live in a neighborhood where there's, I'm right by North Idaho College and there's, everyone has a sidewalk. No one uses them. They all walk in the street. And that's just how it works. I know that's a little bit dangerous. That is a way to school. And I see school, you know, students walking there all the time. To me, this just seems like an undue burden and it seems like it's going to chip away at that ordinance that we already passed. And it reminds me of the shoreline ordinance, which we had here about development within the shoreline that we chipped away. And now it really isn't even there anymore because it just was PUD-ed away everywhere. And so, I would, I would oppose this. Thank you.
Kristi?
Well, Monty, you're, you're really good at getting grants. What kind of grants are out there for this?
What's that?
What kind of grants are out there for something like this?
There was actually a fifty million dollar grant that's available to, to cities to get infrastructure in where sidewalks are missing that we looked at last year. But we hadn't, we haven't gone after it yet, but it's something we're, we're looking at in the future. Something like this in place would help quite a bit. So, these aren't every neighborhood where, we tried doing this before, removing that, that exemption all over town because it's prohibiting, it's keeping us from having connectivity for, safety for people. But we found out, going through that process, that certain neighborhoods, like Dan mentioned, that it kind of destroys the, the character of the neighborhood, you know? They don't already have sidewalks. We're talking maybe down by Sanders Beach and some of these places that you, slow traffic, it's not, it's not as imperative. But these pedestrian corridors, though, they're on routes to schools where there's already a lot of sidewalks there. Like you said, sidewalks to nowhere, and they're not getting filled in. And so, the idea here is we apply for these grants to try to fill them in and just to get kids off the streets. A lot of you've been down there and seen people walking in the street during the wintertime because there's nowhere to go. And it always scares me.
Well, you're really good at getting grants. You do an excellent job for the city on that. So I guess I will just look forward to what comes back to us is what the details are.
Anybody else? Let me ask a couple of questions here. So Dan, it sounded like we were going to make people that don't have sidewalks, once they spend the $30,000 on a remodel, that they have to put sidewalks in. Is that correct?
I think, what is the number right now? $30,000 before you have to?
Actually, we're working on fixing that value.
Right. See, and for me, I see a lot of these way more than $30,000, like, we're talking $300,000, $400,000 rebuilds of an entire house, like on, for example, Mullen. And the side streets had sidewalks. And I don't know how they got away with it. They didn't put a sidewalk along Mullen. And Mullen's priority because we have, the Centennial Trail goes through there. It's two-way bike lane, which is dangerous. And we're trying to fix all that, but we can't until we get sidewalks connecting all the way down 15. So that kind of stuff happens, and I see this really expensive house. They didn't put a sidewalk in. And I'm like, why? Why did they do that? You know? So back to the drawing board, because that house isn't going to be rebuilt for another 50, 60 years. So that's where we'd look for grants for something like that.
I get it. But the way this is written, it's geared at the schools, around schools and the Crock Center. Is that the only focus, or are you looking at the whole thing?
For the priority corridors?
Yeah.
It's for, around schools mostly, and getting kids safe slightly at a few places. That's why we didn't put Mullen on that priority corridor, even though I'd like to see sidewalks there. That wasn't one of the safety zones.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance amending Municipal Code 12.28.210 through 240 to require construction of sidewalks within priority pedestrian corridors that includes school routes and the Crock Center.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion. Mr. Gookin?
Yeah, so I'm still going to vote no. But it's probably going to go forward. So I would like to ask that the ordinance, that there be a map provided, that we know where you're going to be doing this. I also think it would be fair to notify all the affected parties, to let them know that that's our intention to force them to put in a sidewalk. And I'd also like to know how this is going to affect the right-of-way in those areas where there is no right-of-way and there's no sidewalk. Thank you.
And I need to admit that Mullen is on the list for Fernand Elementary.
Anything else? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gookin?
Nope.
Wood?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on. Resolution 24083, authorizing staff to apply for Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, and to accept the grant if awarded. Monty, take it away.
Here again, trying to open up these files here. Okay, so my next project here is bringing forward another grant opportunity. And this one is from the Department of Energy. It's an Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. And it is designed to assist states, local governments, tribes to be more energy-efficient. So these are typically things like redoing your buildings for different kinds of HVAC, or heat pumps that are more energy-efficient, or converting to LED lights, or doing ball fields and LED lights, or using solar stuff, purchasing electric vehicles, or building EV stations, charging stations, or building non-motorized transportation. All those things go towards using less energy. And of course, I like trails. I'm the trail guy. So we all got together and we talked about what the best use of this funding would be. Each city is allotted up to a certain amount to apply for. In Coeur d'Alene's population, we were able to apply for 117. And all these other projects that we talked about were pretty expensive. And so we had talked with administration and with the different departments, and we decided that this trail would be a good fit for this grant. And so in our Trails Master Plan, I got a map up here that kind of shows one missing section of a commuter trail. Phone is silenced. That's a weird alarm. Okay. So we have one section of a commuter trail that is not complete. And that trail goes along Northwest Boulevard. It guides bicycle and pedestrian traffic from the northwest part of town down to downtown. And as you can see, we do have a trail that winds around the wastewater treatment plant down by NIC, down to City Park, and then through to the downtown area. That's wonderful for recreating. If you want to commute to work and you want to get there fast, it's nice to have a trail that goes straight downtown, just like in a car. When you get to, some people want to take Sunday drives, when people want to go straight to work. And so this last little section, it was in the master plan, actually both the last two master plans to have constructed. And when NIC put their big sign in at Hubbard and Northwest Boulevard, I asked them to leave room and grade it for a trail to eventually go there. So this grant came up and thought it'd be a great spot. It's the right distance, the right amount of money to fit the grant, and it would complete this commuter trail. As you can see here, this is the section right here. And I'll go into a little bit better detail with the drawing that Chris made for us. So it'll start here at Hubbard Avenue, wind around the NIC sign, and we continue on going past the Harbor Center and the new water docks, go under the 95 Bridge, and then attach to the existing, or connect to the existing Centennial Trail. I think the only difference is, I think we would probably put the trail up on the railroad grade at the recommendation of the street department. So I got a couple estimates for what a trail like that would cost. We figure it's going to be around $90,000. And I don't like to leave money on the table. So I also proposed putting in another rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacon at a trail crossing. And I put in for Suzanne, but we could always change that if Todd and company believes that there's a better spot for that. That would bring the total amount around 114, so we'd be pretty close to the cap on that grant. So there's no match for this grant, which is a wonderful thing. I think it's pretty competitive because it's out there for every city in the nation. So we're just hoping that we get it.
Any questions? Mr. Gookin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Because that's gravel now. And it's, I ride my bike on that, and it's horrible. So, perfect choice. I really appreciate that. And I think it's going to be great. So I didn't even know it wasn't a trail, because I'm riding it anyway. You said Suzanne. What about the golf course road right by the Crock Center, where the trail crosses there?
The street department just put one in.
So there is one there now.
Yeah, just recently, like a couple weeks ago.
Outstanding. Because that was my suggestion, because to me, that's more scary.
Yeah.
But no, thank you. Good job.
Matter of fact, the last grant we got, we had some left over, and we were able to use that with the help of the Trail Foundation to pay for that one.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else? So let me ask you a couple questions. It'll be an asphalt one, right? Asphalt?
Yeah.
Hard pack, a speed limit?
15 miles per hour, please.
Electric bikes, or just walkers, or strollers, or everybody?
It'll be bikes, pedestrians, strollers. It'll be 12 feet wide, so it'll be for everybody.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could make a motion to approve Resolution Number 24083, authorizing staff to apply for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, EECBG, and to accept the grant if awarded. And if I could just once again say that he has such a track record on these grants, and if anybody can get this for the city, it's you.
The grant master?
Yes, he is.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Other questions, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gookin?
Yep.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Next up, Resolution 24084, approval of revisions of standard drawings for public works construction in the city and construction standards for the Water Department. All the way from engineering, it's Chris Bosley. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So in 2018, I brought my first revisions to the city's standard drawings as the new city engineer, so that our old city engineer didn't have his name on them anymore. At that time, I was asked by Councilmember Miller to, for explanation, or she said it would be better if she knew exactly what we were changing on them. So this time, I provided kind of a summary. Most of the changes to these standard drawings were due to industry standards or misunderstanding by contractors on a lot of them. If it wasn't specific enough, they could get away with things. So things is, like, the water meter being square with the sidewalk instead of crooked to the sidewalk, things like that. So I got input from all the departments that have their standard drawings. Wastewater actually did their modifications themselves. We've added a bunch of standard drawings, actually two this year for the Fire Department, one for a fire no parking area, and another one for approved turnarounds according to the International Fire Code. And then also, at the same time, since we're updating these standard drawings, the Water Department updated their construction standards, and they wanted me to bring that with me for approval at the same time. All of these standards and standard drawings are used on public works projects, but also on subdivisions, like driveways and things like that, sidewalks. So hopefully, we have a clearer picture of what we expect in our construction projects. And with that, I would stand for any questions.
This seems so controversial.
I have to ask, because the information we have is change, no change, and a foreign language to us. You just did the patching, the cutting, not too long ago. Asphalt cutting?
Yes, our pavement cut policy, yes.
Remodeled it in big improvements already, right? You just have to
Yes.
train the contractors how to do it and why, right?
That's right. Yes, it does make for a little bit more expensive construction projects, but it gives us a longer-life road as a product of it. And I did make a bunch of references in these standard drawings to the pavement cut policy. So it seems to be working quite well.
So these changes are somewhat along those lines, refining things, making things more efficient, or is it just standardizing things?
Well, it depends. I mean, some of the water departments were changing their pipe, their pressure class up to 250 PSI from 200 PSI, things like that. I don't know the intricate details of why those things have changed in the industry. But with some of our standard drawings that the Streets and Engineering Department use, it was a matter of our inspectors seeing how a contractor interprets a drawing and how they're trying to make sense of it and trying to make that just a little bit easier for everybody.
Nice, nice. Kiki?
Thanks, Chris. So I'm assuming all departments kind of went with the Idaho Standard Public Works Code rules first, and then adapted any additional document?
Correct. That is our go-to, is the Idaho Standards for Public Works Construction, ISPWC.
I know. Okay, and then, so each one of those things is in compliance with that. And then, do you have the ability, then, to add additional information, or mix uses, or dates and times, or whatever you want that is not in that code? And are some of these that?
Well, some of them are. If we're going to put out a big project, there's nothing to say that we can't put in a detail in there that has to be followed for that project. A lot of these just get incorporated as-is. But a big benefit of this also is when a contractor is building a subdivision, for instance, they have standard details that we expect to see out of it.
Okay. My questioning is just because I think that sometimes things get hung up when the contractor's following just, you know, ISPWC, and then doesn't go, oh, this was a different lift level for that particular road because they didn't look at that policy. If there is a design standard for a big project, then that should be avoided if these are all kind of in a line now. Is that?
Yes, yes. And sometimes we'll even incorporate Idaho Transportation Department standards. If we don't have one specific for that, we'll put one, you know, use, borrow one of theirs.
Okay. Okay, thanks. A lot of work. Thank you.
Other questions? Look for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 24084, approving the revised to the standard drawings for public works construction in the city and construction standards for the Water Department.
Second.
Got a second? Moved in second. Questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Miller?
Aye.
Gookin?
Yep.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
All the way from streets. Todd, welcome.
Thank you.
You are working on a contract with Thorco.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is one of my true passions, talking about stoplights with my background. But so, a year ago, spring of '23, we came before you to ask for some, the way to spend some money with Welch Comer to start the design of this project we're talking about. And so we sat down with most of the agencies around Cootney County, and we discussed who wanted to do what. And basically, you had to get scored on the project that you came up with. And some of the things that we were supposed to do was connectivity with other agencies, to work with other agencies. Hearing all the complaints of our traffic through the last few years, we thought that Government Way would be a good north-south corridor to go after. At the time, we had hoped to ask for all the money, and then we were told that wouldn't look good. We were wanting to do a lot. And so everybody was supposed to give an idea of what they thought a project would look like. So we went in, we had Welch Comer start on a design. You were scored according. If you were 50% in the design of the project, you would get more points to be awarded X amount of dollars for a project. So we went in asking for $3 million to put towards Government Way. Much to our surprise, when we applied, we had all that work done upfront, and they let the cat out of the bag that they were going to offer us $4.8 million. So then we really started thinking, what could we do on this section of road? So that brings us to now. We came up with the design that would go after 10 intersections on Government Way. So we would start at Harrison, and we would go all the way through Prairie Avenue. So that cooperation with another agency would be Prairie. That is the City of Hayden stoplight. So we don't have control over that stoplight. That is the City of Hayden. We started talking to them about what they would want. So they're going to get a lot of new equipment installed through this grant. Basically, everything that our nine intersections will get, they're going to get the same thing. The only thing it won't do, there won't be connectivity from us to their system. They use different equipment than us. They are getting ready to move up to Honeysuckle, Hayden Avenue, and kind of do something on their own. But it's going to be a good partnership. We're going to upgrade a lot of stuff with this project. This is one of our major corridors. This was a strategic initiative grant through LTAC that we applied for. Again, here's some, when we started in '23, got ahead of myself a little bit. We were notified that in January that we were going to receive the $4.8 million. We went out to bid. Once the design was complete, it got out a little later than we wanted. The bid was opened in September. We were hoping to start the project yet this year, but because of the late start, we're going to push it off for a spring, early, early spring start. The neat thing about this grant is, in September, they just give you the money upfront. So we have all the money. There was no match for this. So we just, we put $50,000 down in the design early on before we So we just, we put $50,000 down in the design early on before we were assured we were going to get the money, knowing that we're going to have to do this work eventually. We felt it was a good use, and it got us lined up to do some work. Thorco was the only bid that came in. We were hoping to get other bidders. To be honest, they came in at a favorable number. I will go over some of the things that are included in that price. Thorco's bid was $2,331,437. That was a bit lower than we were anticipating. We will be going, there is the exact total of the amount, 4.826. Our design costs are shown there. The signal equipment, which I'll talk to you in the next presentation, we've opted to buy it ourself to save some money. That is an approximate number. We've kind of padded in case we have to do a change order or something. It is closer to 1.4 is the actual number, but it's all in the grant dollars. There is the bid price again. We do have a contingency, once we've paid for everything, of 5.44, 5.63. As the project goes on, we have to give any money back that we don't use. So we will look for change orders and things to add to the project. So, we will probably look east-west from some of these intersections, whether it's ADA improvements, it's signal equipment. This project will redo all the pad ramps in this corridor and all the signals. If they don't meet current compliance, they will be redone. So, that is included as well. In this slide, that is, it's actually a good picture of that signal pole. I hate that color. It was back in the 80s, and it's kind of oxidized into very unappealing color. We, this will be the first time in this project, there's three intersections. That would be Harrison, Ironwood, and Apple Way. They're going to paint the poles. So that's included in this price. So we will lose that color. We're going to go, the color that we've picked is black. A kind of a, it seems to hold up well in other cities. I've always liked black on those types of structure, the black color. So, I mean, that's in the bid right now. It came in, it's very expensive project, process. It fell within the numbers, and so we're going to do it. I don't see that we'll ever have an opportunity again to upgrade the color. It's going to replace a lot of things, new pedestrian ramps, 10 intersections, new signal heads. All the signal heads will have the reflective yellow color around the back plate. They'll have new pedestrian signal heads, new pedestrian push buttons, all ADA compliant. So they'll be audible, they'll talk, do all those fun things. New detection, all 10 intersection, new signal controllers, new signal cabinets. All 10 of these intersections will be battery backup. They will all be connected together. So, in this project, there is also coordination there on the bottom. So, we have Iteris coming up with a coordination plan right now and how that will work. They've been doing traffic counts for the last eight months through the fair each season to try and build us an up-to-date traffic control plan. We're really excited about this project. It's been needed for a long time. I will share, next year will come to you, we have another grant that we've got. It's in design right now, but it would be on Ramsey Road, north of Kathleen, up to Prairie Avenue. So we'd be doing similar work there as well, but that's about a year behind. At this time, I'd take any questions.
Thanks, Todd. Any questions? Kenny?
So, do, we have the emitters all the way up through Government Way, correct?
Yes, 90% of them don't work currently.
Is that anything that can be done with this?
So we are putting all new equipment in for that. It's similar technology as to what we have currently. Some of this equipment, though, does offer connectivity through what they call connected vehicles. Cootney County hasn't done that too much yet, but most new cars that come off production now, actually, if there is equipment at the intersection, it can communicate with the signal. It will tell it how long till it's going to be green. It will say all these things. Therefore, new fire trucks will have some of that technology, and we will be able to move in a different direction with that. But currently, when this went to design, we are upgrading all of the preemption equipment. And the current devices on the engines right now will all link up to that. So yes, it will be upgraded.
Thank you. Christie?
Great presentation, and it's really going to be an incredible thing. And I remember you brought this to us about a year ago, talking about it. My question, you're waiting until spring, that makes sense. But that's Troy, $4.8 million. Where is that invested so that we can reap the benefits of that?
That money is invested in either the State of Idaho's fund, or you have time certificates of deposit throughout the area, and we just redid those since rates appear to be going down, and we locked them up with credit unions for this period of time. All backed by FDIC or the credit union insurance. Or, since you asked, we reinsure those and ask for treasuries in case the credit union goes under. We are fully covered on all of those investments.
So, we will gain some interest off that project. You don't have to give that back, do you?
No, I believe we would just, the money we were awarded, we would, don't worry, we're going to use every penny.
Right.
Not worried about that, but yeah. Some of the money will get spent from now, and in the next presentation, I'll explain that.
Okay.
But as far as the contract work, all of that, that portion is going to probably wait till spring. Concrete, can't paint poles. I mean, there's things that can't happen probably till early March.
Sure. Thank you.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excellent job, both you and Chris. Thank you so much. And I think the people will appreciate it. I know these new signals are much smarter, like you talked about with that scary technology. And, yeah, they just, they see the flow of traffic, and they're just, it's going to move things right along. So I really appreciate that. Harrison especially, I hate that intersection. So thank you for doing that, starting there. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 24-085, which is the acceptance of a bid and awarding contract to Thorco for Government Way signal and ADA improvement project in the amount not to exceed $2,331,437.
Second?
Been moved in second. Discussions? Question?
And this is just the Thorco contract part?
Correct.
Yeah.
So I'm going to go into some more of that.
I have to ask a couple of questions. So this doesn't do any changes in the width of the street, right turn lanes, nothing like that, physical?
It doesn't change the physical of the intersection. We will be adding flashing yellows and things like that, all four sides of each approach. So, the left turn lanes will change a little bit, not in size or location, but the functionality of that left turn lane will be a little more efficient because we'll allow more time.
Mentioned detention, detection. What is detection in that world?
So we have several ways that we do detection right now. Tried and true is a magnetic loop that's in the asphalt or below the asphalt. We've used that for years. We experimented for a short time with what they refer as a puck.
Puck, yeah.
Don't use that. And then, the current form, most common today, would be video detection or radar, or sometimes you do a combination unit of radar and video together. Northwest Boulevard, all those upgrades are a video radar unit. They work well. This project is primarily going to upgrade most of the intersections to video only, but it's two sets of cameras. It'll be cameras looking at the intersection and cameras looking as far out as 600 feet away. So, but this, the most cost-effective will be with the video detection.
Okay. The equipment, listening to Wastewater, everything you order takes longer. Are you, is what you have to order, what you have to buy, is it realistic to have it?
Next presentation, I'll go over that.
Yeah, okay.
Soon as I flip the slide.
Street lights, any changes in the lights that light the streets besides the intersections?
So in the last eight years, we have pretty much retrod or changed out all of our street lighting that the City of Coeur d'Alene manages to LED. The streetlights on the Government Way corridor still have lots of life, so they're not in this project. So at this time, it'll stay the way it is.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Look, I got a motion. Need, roll call, please.
Gookin?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on.
Okay, so the next part of this, sole source purchase request. So with this equipment, we actually ordered all of this equipment, probably, truth be told, as far as six months ago, to assure that we would have it here for a spring start. We were crossing our fingers maybe sooner, but we will most likely be getting most of the equipment by the first of the year, but that still won't allow the contractor to start. We'll have to wait for warmer weather. Reason for sole source, this is a picture of the inside of the cabinet that was hit last Fourth of July at Harrison and Government Way. So, the reason we had this cabinet is because ITD got themselves a little sideways in a contract and decided they wanted to go a different way with cabinets. They already had four cabinets sitting at their yard from a contractor. Don't want to go into a lot of the detail, but because of a legal battle, the brand that we use, the exact cabinet that we use, was looking for a home. And so I started to negotiate with the vendor. We got these cabinets for about 50% of the cost, so that's saving us money for this project. We hadn't fully taken possession of them, but we had a youngster make a bad choice, July 3rd, and he took out a very expensive cabinet, so we purchased the cabinet. We had it that day to put it in. It's the same cabinet we would have put there. So that's what it, it's not been cleaned up yet, but the left side of the picture, that is all the battery backup. Just for a quick explanation, the rest of it, the middle, from the floor all the way up to the roof of that cabinet is what it takes to run the intersection. The black box in the middle of the screen is the brains of the cabinet. All these parts are very expensive. All of these parts take time to get. That's why Woody used to sign a lot of things as council president. We'd have to have six of those black boxes sitting on our shelf, so when lightning comes or something, we have one sitting there. If I have to order one, it can take as far as six months just to get one new one. So, we have to have them on the shelf. The other thing that's important that you've heard in the past year or years is connectivity. We use a certain brand of equipment. They all have to be compatible with each other. They have to talk to each other. So we have to use our brand. We get to a point where you've invested a certain amount in this to where we have to stay the course, because we would have to reinvent the wheel, so to speak, to go with someone else's product. It would cost a lot of money. We have several corridors now that are, they are a true connected corridor, and all the signals talk to each other. It would cost us a lot of money to change the brand and the software that we are currently using. All of this stuff, I feel, is top-notch. This company that we use, the maintenance they provide for us, they've came out and fixed some of our old intersections at no cost to the City of Coeur d'Alene. It's not even their equipment. They stand behind their product. They stand behind us. Their service is top-notch. Because of this, we have to purchase most of this equipment through them because it won't work with other brands. The other thing that is nice, it's not the only reason, but if I want to keep six different brands on the shelf for that one event, it's very expensive to buy six different brands to have to replace each one. So, the more that we are one product, it just makes it more economical for us. So, anyway, that is the reason we come today with the sole source agreement. The equipment that the City of Coeur d'Alene is going to purchase is just under $1.4 million for all 10 intersections. So it's a lot. That's the money we'll be spending now. As the equipment shows up, we'll have to pay for it. It'll sit on our shelf until the project starts. Because we ordered it six months ago, it will get the product, Woody, out in a timely manner to where we can start the project and meet those timelines. Cabinets, six to 12 months. The computers, six months. So it all takes time. So that's why we preorder it. Anyway, at that, at this time, I'd take any questions. I could go on for hours, so.
Thanks, Troy. Questions, you guys? I have to ask, are the cabinets protected?
As far as?
If somebody drives into them, does it, we start over? Is that just the way they are?
Cabinets are expensive. We back everything up on our server, so we have ways that we can put it back exactly the way it was. As we learned at Harrison, none of the equipment survives an impact. That young man had a very expensive life lesson. I think the equipment to fix that intersection to today's standards was just under $70,000. So, I mean, it's, as far as protected, I mean, we protect the software, back everything up, but as far, yeah. All these will come wrapped. It's included in the project, so we won't have to pay the way we normally do to wrap the cabinets. So, yeah.
So somebody can still drive into a cabinet and we start over?
Pretty much.
That's what I meant by protection.
Legally, we can't put a concrete wall in front of a cabinet. We had one at Prairie a few years ago. We used to put the concrete foundation up to 24 inches above grade, and then the box sat on top of that. The reason you did that was so that when the car comes and hits or hitting the concrete, that's exactly what it did. It pushed it back. We were able to pour new foundation around it, but the box wasn't injured. Well, concrete doesn't move. It's not breakaway, and that causes a problem when a car hits it and hurts somebody. So cabinet's kind of the sacrifice. I mean, they're there. They're not supposed to last an impact, so, yeah. Just very expensive.
Don't even think about it. We're both thinking the same thing. We want to say it.
I would love to put ballards or things in front of them.
Exploding cabinets is what I was looking for.
Any other questions?
You'd have to clear that with Randy.
You just, ah, man. I'll look for a motion, please.
So I would make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 24-086, which is declaring that there is only one vendor, reasonable vendor, available for the purchase of traffic signal equipment needed for the Government Way Signal Improvement Project, directing the city clerk to publish a notice for the sole source procurement and authorizing the purchase of equipment at least 14 days after the date of publication.
I'll second.
I got a first and a second. I have to learn how to write your name, Kenny.
That's all right.
Questions? Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Gookin?
Yeah.
All right, Troy, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor McEvers.
With City Link.
City Link, welcome. Councilmember Gabriel. I bring before you a proposal for a public transit funding agreement. We've done it for a couple dozen years. Would you like to approve this again? It is in your financial plan. The reason that this was created as a City Link transit system was because in 2000, a census designated the cities of Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, Hayden, Hutter, and Dalton Gardens as an urbanized area within Cootney County, thus making it eligible for federal transit dollars. The Cootney County Transit System oversees the City Link system, which includes a fixed route service that is in partnership with the City of Coeur d'Alene, our friends at the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, Post Falls, Hayden, Dalton, and Hutter, and provides three regular fixed routes, bus routes. There's another program under City Link. It's called the Paratransit Service. That provides an origin-todestination complimentary service within 3/4 of a mile of the area where the fixed route buses go. There's one more service they supply, which is called the Ringeride. That is for seniors above the age of 65 with disabilities who are unable to use the Paratransit Service. This Ringeride is a special service which uses lift-equipped buses to transport people with limitations, to get them where they need to go, again at no cost. City Link is overseen by our Cootney County Board of Commissioners and has a staff working on it. They provide a free service. They provide a free service to our public. Last year, they originated over 100,000 riders throughout this system. The city's being asked to fund a pro-rata share of their budget based on our population. The dollar amount for this year is $104,298. They got us that number early in your budget process. That is a 3% increase over last year's expense. It's appropriated in the general ledger. Again, this is with the Federal Transit Administration, so there are many, many strings attached with this. However, this money is used to cover operations, maintenance, vehicle procurements, as well as administration of the system. Councilmember Wood was on the bus recently, taking a ride and seeing what the system does. I will take back to our colleagues at City Link to work on a bus bench at that location. There's a couple of challenges. City Link actually brought electeds, planners, and administrators to share with them what the bus route is, as well as look at each stop for its compliance with, does it have a bench? How level is the landing area? How far out in the road is the bus as it makes a stop? And so, it was very informational, and I thought staff from City Link had done a really good job of making that happen. They have consultants that will be working on those stops to improve them. We at the city partner on that. I've got a city engineer that does great work in trying to get better, improved bus stops and working on roads. We'll probably be working with a hotel in downtown Coeur d'Alene, because there's a bus stop where a hotel will be in the future. This is a very unique relationship, one of the very few in the country that has a tribe that's such a major player in it, along with the cities, and Cootney Health, which does an amazing job. So, again, we've witnessed it at the city. Without partnerships, none of this would all come together at the level that it does. So, I am able to stand for any questions you may have, share with you the extent to which this has been helping our citizens throughout the year.
All right, questions? Amy?
Well, there's no doubt, this is a huge benefit to the citizens. My question is on the 3% increase from last year that we're seeing. Are all the partners paying the same percentage of increase for this year?
Yes, we had gone back to them a few years ago and said, "You can't jump these rates based on what gas prices may be, so that we can get budgetarily sound." And they tightened up their budget and have lived by that since we've had that communication.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just, just comment, I want to, I want to thank the City Link staff for setting that up for elected officials and staff to actually just be immersed in it, understand what the route is. We, we did the A Route, which is mostly all the way downtown to the end of Sherman, and then back out to City Link. And it was really eye-opening. I know so many people that use City Link. I see them every day on the Prairie Trail, walking to the transit hub there. And I just think we can never lose sight of the number of people that rely on that service, and it's incumbent upon us to make sure that we provide that service. I'm glad we're a partner. I'm glad they set up that ride-along. It was very valuable to me, and I fully support this budget request.
Anything else? Hearing none, look for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 24-087, approving an agreement with Cootney County for City Link services.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please?
Evans?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Kukin?
Yep.
Wood?
Yes.
Troy, one more time.
Counsel, I bring before you a potential change that the city would like to make with your approval to assign our contract for garbage services and take advantage of the two, three-year extensions. City Coeur d'Alene has been approached by the ownership at Northern State PAC LLC, doing business as the Coeur d'Alene Garbage Services. They are seeking to take their business interest and sell it to Allied Waste Services of North America LLC. In the contract that you agreed to back on July 1st, 2016, hard to believe how long ago that was already, there was two, three-year options to extend the contract. So, it was originally 10 years. That's mainly in the best interest of the contractor to know that they can buy equipment, amortize it out, and then have two, three-year extensions. So, that was put into place. It has been performing as we had hoped, and now there's a sale of the business. Allied Waste Services of North America is a limited liability corporation that is very, very large. It's part of Republic Services. That's the name that you would see on trucks. They do business in Idaho. Coeur d'Alene Garbage wants the city to go ahead and officially assign that contract, which we had anticipated could be done. Legally, we're in good stead to move forward with that. It is a privately-held corporation. I think the exciting part for the city of Coeur d'Alene is that they want us to extend the two options at this point in time. Allied Waste, doing business as Republic, is very, very, very large. It was number two waste hauler in this country. They were founded in 1988, headquartered in Phoenix, definitely a leader in the solid waste industry. They only have a mere 10 million customers in about 37 states, so it's a large corporation. This opportunity looks to be one that is good for our community. As we looked into Allied Waste doing business with Republic as their name, they look to keep all the personnel at Coeur d'Alene Garbage and Post Falls Sanitation. I know I have owners behind me of the organization. That was very important to them. And so, the owner has been at my desk for a while. He's a good individual to share his business once it got to the point of signing a deal. So, from the perspective of city staff in our finance department that work very closely with the billing, this appears to be the same as it was before. We don't have any reason legally that we could say no to the assignment. I'm going to share with you directly that extending this contract at this point in time with the two options is very, very good for your constituents. When we signed this deal, that Coeur d'Alene Garbage came in very low when we did it July 1st of 2016, we did not know that there was going to be a pandemic that occurred and a little bit of inflation, maybe a lot of inflation if you wanted to look back. We have this contract locked in at a very low rate. That's been very good for your constituents, and they get very good service. Garbage is picked up weekly. Every other week, we have our recyclables picked up. And you've only raised the rate once in that period of time. Also, going forward, we have a locked-in accelerator on this that has a minimum and a maximum, that I can't speak for the owner directly, but they would not really like to have this going forward. It's a 1.5 to 2.75% increase based on the different indexes that we have in here. Inflation has not been that low at all, gas prices, personnel. So, you have a very low increase that occurs on an annual basis. In so doing, there are different rates with different cities. You have three choices, which is quite impressive. You have a 35-gallon for residential gallon container, 64 and a 96. Currently, our cost to our constituents is $11.05. I can't find anything less expensive in our area. I can find a lot that's more expensive. We have a great city that is to our west. That 96-gallon container there is $14.80 per month. Dare I take you outside the city limits? If you lived in Hayden or out there, it'd be about $23.59 per month, and that's just picking up the garbage. If you want recycling, we could add on to that about $17 a month. Now, in Idaho, in Cootney County, on your tax bill, you pay a fee, as I do, to sanitation fund. If I jump over the Spokane River and run around there and look at rates, Spokane uses a material recycling facility. Those are expensive to run. You can have your garbage picked up there for a mere $57 per month. That's helping pay for that facility. Ours would be more if we were paying for the $92 a year that we put to Cootney County sanitation. And if we go down south to maybe Boise, it's a $25 a month, and that doesn't include recyc, that would include recycling, actually have a lower rate if you do recycling. So, I'm sharing with you numbers as of today, for rates, for garbage service that are comparable to where we are at. So, this has come forward to us. I wholeheartedly endorse taking advantage of those options. That will move that contract forward. I do need to give you the utmost credit. Part of the reason that they want this piece of business is they don't collect anything. We send them a check for the number of customers that we have, because we do all the billing. And if a person chooses not to pay the city of Coeur d'Alene, we make sure that they know that, and if they choose really not to pay it, we can turn their water off. So, we have a very high collection rate. But the contractor coming in knows that they're going to get paid every month. They're not working hard on accounts receivables. And anybody that's been in business knows that having an account receivable looks good on paper, but it doesn't do anything for your cash flow, and your banker can't take that and put it inside your account. So, we're unique in that for a contractor to come in and want to get this piece of business and tie it up. So, I'm just going to give you both sides to the equation, as Troy sees it, and compliment you for having a long-term contract, and then really con, compliment Randy Adams for having worked on this piece of, I don't know, it's only 40-some pages-long contract. So, I would stand for any questions you may have.
Questions? Kenny?
Troy, Randy, thank you. Great job. This has been a kind of interesting thing over the years, but prices don't go down, do they? So, if they're fixed for our folks, that's a wonderful thing, right?
Councilmember Gabriel, working on that. Councilmember Gabriel, that is a real opportunity for us. I would suggest to you that at the end of the 10-year period, when the options come up, we would have had a contractor attempting to move that number. Trucks that haul trash have not come down in cost. They have done nothing but go up, just like the fire trucks that we're looking at. So, they're, they're buying a long-term relationship. City Coeur d'Alene's not going to change its name in the next 100 or so years, and so, there's a real opportunity here for Republic to do business.
Thank you.
Questions? Kiki?
I just had two things. One is, I'm assuming it's, doesn't sound typical to exercise an extension before the contract is expired in both of them. So, it's typical and legal to put those in.
Yes, the contract, as it's written, does not specify when the options have to be exercised. So, they can be exercised at any time, at the, at the option of both parties.
Okay, my other question was, we had a, a funding issue around glass recycling that I believe was part of this last contract. So, does all of those elements remain the same regarding how that's going to be handled?
Funding issue means, so we asked for recycling to take place, including glass. So, our recycling is basically reuse of glass. The new acquirer of the company is a much, well, it's the second-largest provider of services. So, it's possible we can get something else with the way that the glass is handled that could be different, shall we say?
But that, but the way the contracts are right now just transfers directly?
Just transfers, yep. Just to confirm, yes.
Probably won't be worse, but it may be better.
Yes.
For lack of a better, okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Woody. Well, Troy, I, we were so used to Mr. Damiano. I see the new owners in the back, but I wondered if maybe one could come forward and we could meet them?
Pressure.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilors. My name is Ryan Lawler. I'm the area president for Republic Services Northwest area. So, my colleagues and I, some of which are in the room here, we work out of the Seattle, Washington area, and we help our company manage and operate the business very locally in 10 different states and one Canadian province. So, a little bit about the company. So, second-largest environmental services provider in the country, headquartered in Phoenix, 42,000 employees. We have 350 different hauling facilities, operate 75 recycle centers, and over 200 landfills. Okay, so, big national company, lots of different resources, but we take pride in managing and operating the business very locally. So, a little bit of context about how we got here. So, we've been admiring the Damiano business from afar for quite some time. And when we learned about their pending retirement from the garbage business, we took every opportunity to demonstrate why we were the preferred partner, to carry on their legacy that they've established here in Cootney County, Coeur d'Alene, and Post Falls for the last 50 years. So, we're humbled to be in this position, to carry the torch and provide that same safe, sustainable, and durable service that you and your constituents have come to expect for quite some time. I will also share a few of the commitments that we made to Phil and Leslie that we will also make to you right now. It was very important to Phil and Leslie that we keep the operations here in Cootney County. So, we will continue to manage the business very locally. We were able to offer jobs to all of the current employees. Very important to us to keep as many people here as possible. Also, very important to provide that same safe and consistent service and participate in your community, and continue forward with all the great events and activities and contributions that they've been so generous with over the course of time. So, very excited to be here, very excited for the partnership, certainly over the next couple of years, and hopefully, the additional six years associated with the two, three-year extension options.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Comments?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion
All right.
To adopt resolution number 24-088, consenting to the assignment of a contract from Coeur d'Alene Garbage to Republic Garbage, and accepting the extension of the term of the contract for an additional six years.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion, comments? Sounds like a good deal. Thank you, guys, and Troy, thank you. Roll call, please?
Gabriel?
Yes.
Miller?
Aye.
Kukin?
Yep.
Wood?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Look to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks, you guys, welcome to Idaho.